Okay, I'd like to call the meeting order for February 21st, 2024. We'll start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, warrant bills are all signed up?
Yes.
Yep.
Approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda for October 21st, 2024.
Second.
All in favor? Minutes of the last meeting?
On the table.
You want to table it? We'll table those till next week.
They haven't been reviewed, so.
We'll table those till next week. Oh, that's good. Town administration weekly update.
All right, just a couple of things to notify the board about. One, you probably saw the email that I sent. We are advertising for the cleaning job at the town hall. The person that's currently doing it has decided to take full-time work elsewhere. So we've got a bid that we're putting out currently for anybody looking to clean. The only issue that we're having, or that the only, the only point we want to make is the cleaning has to be done on Thursday mornings. Because the cleaning has to be done when the town hall is not open. So on Thursday, staff gets here at nine. We don't open to the public till noon time. So that gives them three hours to clean because what we've found in the past is when they're trying to mop and vacuum around, customers coming in and out, it's a hazard. So we're open to some changes with the cleaning or open into some options, but it has to be Thursday morning.
Jennifer, in the past, we just put a thing out there.
Yeah, we're accepting bids.
Yeah, I mean, but we've done it before where, you know, like for a soul or P and everything else, you know, we've sent stuff to certain companies.
Yeah, and we have.
And we have. Have we done that?
Well, we just started advertising a few days ago.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we've got a list of some locals that we found. There's a lot of cleaning companies. We've gotten a lot of response already.
Oh, you have?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, this is just to let you know.
Provide a reason why they stopped there.
Uh, because she's going to be taking full-time work.
Okay, great.
Closing the business or cutting back.
Well, appreciate.
Yeah, she's done a great job.
Done her job.
She did. Uh, next is to let you know that the town report is officially at the printers. Um, we have sent over all the documents. Thanks to Dan for making the last-minute changes that we were looking for, but it is in their hands now. I did speak to them on the phone as well. And she hopes within seven to ten days, we'll have a draft. Um, she expects all of them to be here by March 6th, 10th, somewhere around there. So we'll be in plenty of time to meet our statute.
Nice.
Um, I just got an email from the sheriff's department letting us know that they did another traffic detail. Um, it was scheduled for four hours because of an emergency in town. They had to cut it down to three. Um, they had five traffic stops, five summonses were issued, one on Milton Mills Road, one on New Bridge Road, and three on Route 109. And they will only bill us for the three hours.
I had a pretty good conversation with our Mr. Sambo the other day.
You did?
I did, yep.
Okay.
I ain't gonna go into details, but.
He's not doing these special, they're bringing in someone from.
Correct, overtime, yeah.
Good.
Um, and last is to let you know that, um.
Has there been any feed, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but has there been any feedback about these details from the community?
Honestly, I'm.
One way or the other?
No, I haven't heard anything at the counter. Nope.
Okay.
So I don't know if they're, are we stopping if they're regulars or if they just realize they're speeding and just don't say anything? I don't know.
Those don't realize it's extra time?
Hmm.
Okay, all right. So the last thing, um, well, a couple, last thing I really wanted to mention was, um, so when we did our neighbors helping neighbors Thanksgiving dinner, um, we were asked by many of the people that attended to consider doing a spring fling kind of end of winter dinner. We, a lot of our regulars that come just kind of looking for another reason to get out of the house. So I talked to the girls who were doing a lot of the work, um, behind the scenes, and we've decided to host a neighbors helping neighbors free char, free, no charge dinner on March 16th. So our neighbors will fund the, um, the dinner itself, will handle everything. Um, it's going to be beans and hot dogs, cornbread, coleslaw, all the fixins. So we'll try to get all of our, um, older people out, or people that are alone, families, everybody's welcome. But we're going to set that up for March 16th.
Nice, nice.
Yeah. Um, a lot of them really enjoy it, didn't really enjoy the take home. Um, two other reminders, the primary, don't forget, is on March 5th. Polls will be open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Uh, March 6th is the public hearing for the floodplain and the mooring ordinance. I think that's all I have.
Okay, Department Head, committee chair updates?
Uh, Leslie Berlin, um, I, um, we did our warrant recommendations last night. There are three articles that, um, we'll be reconsidering at the school because, um, one of them was, Jennifer, do you want to do this later or do you?
Well, I had it on the agenda, but however you want to handle it.
It does, yeah. Um, so one of them was on the foreclosure. Jennifer, you sent the information I think we need. I'm not going to question MMA.
Yeah.
And they're, yeah, so, um, the, um, fund balances, you're going to get to us and then we'll be able to do that. And then the one line, Article 40, the computer maintenance, that, um, 10,00738.
Right, which we, uh, we talked about that last week. I was surprised to see that on the list. That was for the, um, the stipend that we're paying for the website, the newsletter, the email, the position that was last year, that stipend that we, um, started for the person that oversees all of that.
Okay, so that's a stipend?
Yeah, it's 10 hour, it's 10 hours a week. Um, and he's doing, like I said, all the maintaining the full website. He's hosting the email addresses. He created the website. He sends out the newsletter every week, makes all the changes. Um, so that's what that stipend is. But I'm happy to give you a breakdown for the.
Well, no, no, you had said, you had said that in the email that you sent me this afternoon. Um, I was, I was a little confused because every, all the, um, the FICA and all of that wasn't broken out, so, and it is on almost every other.
Yeah, and that's.
I didn't realize it was a stipend and not a, um, a regular salary.
Yeah, and certainly, and I think you've heard us talk about this a little bit, um, when July 1st comes around, we're really looking at a complete overhaul of our chart of accounts. Um, and that's one of the areas, I mean, that the board created it mid-budget season when we had the need for the website and we were able to, to use that extra computer repair money for that. So that's where it got billed out of, that's where it started paying out of. So it's just a carryover from the treasury, but we're going to clean all that out. But I think it's a, a good point that you were able to find that. But we'll, I'll have something for you, a breakdown of that line, including FICA Medicaid.
Okay, yeah. Um, so those are the three that we'll be reconsidering, um, after we do the, um, the school articles. And then, so I will, um, let, update you on Friday to let you know what, what happened with that, if, you know, if anything changed.
Perfect.
Um, also, um, because we're, we're nearing the end of our, our work for this year unless something major happens, um, I wanted to thank Jennifer and, and the board for the, um, collaboration that we've had this year. Um, this process, this new process, I think, went very well. I, I did poll all of the committee members last night and they all had positive things to say about the new process.
Good, thanks. Appreciate that.
Um, there, there is one suggestion that, that we did come up with that could make things easier. And that is to, when we, when we start looking at the budgets in depth, to, to maybe have a workshop where all of us are sitting together, um, kind of like a roundtable. Um, that way we can have all of our papers, we're not coming up and go, sitting down, um, so we can, you know, more efficiently talk about the budgets and go into, you know, to different paper, you know, papers and, and, uh, information. So that's the one suggestion that we would make for next year.
We used to do that.
Yeah, we just.
We used to do that, but what we would do is we'd bring it in department to do it. Instead, we'd just do it with the finance committee and the select board. Kind of go through the whole thing, then do exactly what we did this year.
Yeah.
That would work.
So, I mean, if, if we all sit together and, and do that process where, you know, here, so that way the, the select board meetings aren't tied up with a lot of stuff. So, or, you know, so you're running three hours or longer. Um, and then it would make it easier for us to be able to access whatever questions and paperwork because a lot of times we have to go to three or four different, um, handouts that we've gotten.
Would you send us a note on that so we don't lose track of what it is you're suggesting?
Oh, absolutely.
Fair enough.
Absolutely. So anyway.
And I will send you over the moderators. I just didn't make it on today's list, but I'll get it to you.
Yeah. Um, but, I mean, the, the, the increase in collaboration between the select board and the warrant finance was, was really, really good to see. And made the process a lot easier and, and we're, we're thankful for that.
I'm pretty excited about the way everything went this year. Yeah. And, um, you know, it's almost like a wicked time.
Seemed to be seamless, really. I mean, a lot of work still, but, but it's nice to, nobody likes.
Just work back and forth.
Nobody likes budget time.
No.
It's the worst part of the year.
Not only do we change the process, but we reduce the time significantly.
Right.
Yeah. Which, uh, you know, doing either of those is one thing, doing them both together is yet another. So next year, hopefully, we'll be sticking to that timeframe we set this year. We'll have the process. So I, I would hope that next year, because it won't be the first time through it, it will be better.
Right, right.
I'm, I'm kind of thinking next year with some of the things, where we're going to do some of our financing, I think it's going to make our process a whole lot easier.
Well, if we have a finance director and, I mean, that will, you know, that person would be doing the bulk of it. Um, and then probably the finance person working more directly with the, with warrant finance. You know, to, to iron out a lot of the questions that we have and.
Good.
So, anyway.
Glad it worked for him.
Appreciate it.
All right, thanks. Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna, it's not, they're still going to talk about it. Yeah.
Good, yep. Okay, any more Department Head, committee chairs? I don't see any. Okay, we're going to go down to liaison updates. Tom?
Well, there was a warrant finance committee the other night. I did not make it, but I didn't think, given the agenda, I needed to be there, so I hope you didn't miss me.
We did.
Huh? You didn't?
No, we did.
Oh, okay. I thought you was.
It could be sarcasm, too. I don't know. I can't tell.
Could be a little bit of that. That's all right. Thank you. Um, and primarily working on just reviewing the budget, getting, I, I think we're at a point where it's in pretty good shape, so, uh, hopefully, we're going to be sharing that with them soon. Good.
Ed?
Sure. Just making myself a note. Um, I happened to run into two people on the fire department side to do with the tower. Just to back up a smidge, we, I had a meeting with, uh, EcoMaine because the trash committee there that's looking at doing the rates. We had a field trip up to EcoMaine. I rode up with the, um, town manager of North Berwick, and he's the head of the tower committee for the communications.
Trying to figure out how you're going to tie the trash station and that together.
I figured I'd back up to that point and bring it forward. Uh, but I had a nice conversation with them and they're very interested in helping us with the tower and the building.
Whether we own it or not?
Well, we'd want to own it. So something that they, they would be very interested if we owned it to, to take a lot of the burden off us.
And who is they?
That, the tower committee or the.
Communications.
Communications committee.
So is that a funded, is that a committee funded by something or someone?
It's part of, uh, part of Sanford Communications and all the towns that are involved.
So they're all kicking in and?
Yes. So.
Is this what Wayne had mentioned earlier?
Yes.
So the same, okay.
So this, like I say, I rode up there with him and then I, I don't know whether I brought it up or he did, but we had the opportunity to chat about it and there is some interest there. So, which is a good thing. So it's something we may want to proceed with, or pursue, I should say.
I, I, I've talked to the landlord.
Yeah.
I did meet with her.
Okay.
The other night.
Okay.
At the member of the meeting, I did.
Yeah, you did, because I couldn't. Yeah, yeah.
And, um, she's, um, food for thought. She's just thinking.
Okay.
Where are going to respond?
You didn't get a flat no out of her?
Nope.
On anything?
No, and that's going to be a, yeah, a contract negotiations through an executive session without legal working on something.
Yeah. But I just wanted to bring up that we did have that conversation. You know, there, there is some interest there. So there actually was a huge amount of interest back when they had the, uh, when EMA had their COVID funds.
Oh, yeah.
But it somehow didn't make it into that part of the budget. So there was, there was a lot of money that was going to be kicked into it, but, um, that went in a different direction. So, um, so that was good. Um, I had two things I was going to bring up. The tower was the biggie.
Well, you went on a field trip.
Yeah, the field trip. That was just basically go up and see what EcoMaine was all about and see if that's something to pursue. And they're, they're putting some numbers together for, for the, is what? I forget how many towns involved, um, in that contract. But that's a, it comes up in June of '25. But we're starting it now to look and see. So, um, yeah, so on that, we're just waiting for some numbers there. We have two other companies we're talking to.
Okay.
So, yep.
Yep.
Um, like Jen said, I kind of did a review of the town report and made it last-minute edits and suggestions. And I was also able to make the public forum of the zoning articles, the public forum for that, and then the planning board meeting. But other than that, nothing else with the other committees.
Okay, good. Um, I have no update. Old business warrant recommendations.
Okay, so, um, this is going to be fairly lengthy. Do you have any chance I could ask you to sneak in the library?
You know, that's a great idea.
It's going to be a long, we got a lot to talk about it.
What we're going to do here is.
You know, it sells one of my favorite ballot clerks, so.
We're going to move up our new business A-up and do old business, just so we can get her out of here. So, come on up, Elise. It's a good idea.
Thank you for having me and then sooner than later. Um, I don't, do you have the letter of interest in front of you?
I do.
Okay, so, uh, basically, this grant program is investing in new and existing community anchor institutions such as libraries and other gathering places that enable workforce training, education, and health monitoring for people most impacted by the digital divide. It's, um, granted through the Maine Connectivity Authority. Um, the total award for, um, the program is $11.2 million and that's going to be spread out through 16 to 20 projects. Uh, the minimum range is $250,000 up to $2 million. So that's just a little backstory on the, the grant that's being offered. Uh, the future of libraries is changing as libraries all over are offering much more than books. People can check out unique items from what is called a library of things. Acton Public Library through grant money offers fishing poles and snowshoes, air fryer, food dehydrator, power washer, like ice cream maker. We have all kinds of stuff. Uh, but nature backpacks for kids to check out, um, and more. And that was through, um, a grant I had a couple of years ago. Our puzzle collection and a lot of libraries took up on that offer too and offer much more than what I have. Uh, our puzzle collection is large and active. In addition to loaning books and things, we also offer safe space for, um, with up-to-date computers for people to come work or study. We can scan and fax and print and copy and offer little to no cost to the community, uh, where most people would have to drive 30 minutes to like a Staples or something or FedEx. The staff at the library are ready and willing to offer technology to, uh, help with the best of their ability. We can proctor exams and we are also your trusted source for information, directions, and other resources. With the digital equity grant through Maine Connectivity Authority, we can offer way more. Uh, the library could be more than books and things. It could be the connectivity hub, reducing barriers that may be in the way of community members accessing technology and broadband internet. I know, um, we have a lot of complaints about the internet connection here in Acton. Um, I know not too long ago, the town was out, but the library actually had internet and, um, because we have a different source of internet service than the rest of the town, we were able to have that, offer that service while everybody else was down. Uh, the grant will allow us to offer more computer stations, including some that are private for work, study, or telehealth appointments. Telehealth, uh, which grew threefold during COVID, is here to stay and can help community members attend appointments without driving 30 to 60 minutes to get to their provider. The grant will allow us to offer a digital navigator to guide those who need technology help with job applications, telehealth tools and such. It will also, um, I will also mention remote workers here. Something, um, else that resulted from the pandemic is also here to stay. In fact, a lot of residents made Maine, Acton their permanent home, selling their away home, um, because they can work from home now. Uh, Acton Public Library already has people who come in to use the little space we have, often setting up a table in the middle of the children's area for them to work at. Or they might move a computer that's already stationed aside so they can set up their laptop. Um, either way, the space is intrusive to people trying to use the areas. Um, I also do know of an Acton resident who does travel to Sanford to a coffee shop to do her work there, so, um, she can have the, the broadband there and the, in the space. So basically, the question I have in front of you, select board, uh, town of Acton, is if the library is awarded, um, this grant, which I have asked for 500,000 to a million, I don't know how much the space is going to cost, um, will the town give or lease the land to the library to build a new structure? And if so, can you provide a letter of support which guarantees this lease until 2031, which is five years past the project completion date? Um, so the timeline for the grant is, this, this letter of interest is due February 29th, which is a week from tomorrow. And the application, if, so ju- just because we've done the letter of interest, it's not the application. I, I need to be invited to, um, an interview to be, then apply for the grant. So this is just the early stages, but this is like my setup to like, I don't want to go through this process if the town isn't going to, um, let us use the land to build on. The application is due March 29th. I know this is all happening fast and we've been working as a board pretty quickly to, to gather this information just to get the letter of interest done in a timely manner. Um, so grant or no grant, I, I think we all know that Acton Library has outgrown its space. And we do use the town hall for large gatherings that are planned, uh, homeschool, um, whether we're having music here with the kids or just a, a large story hour, but sometimes I have those unplanned gatherings and people are stepping over kids on the floor to get to books. And they're just, we're just running out of space when we have.
You get a lot of people that comes out of there all at once and see a bunch of kids, you're, 10, 15 of them, that pack that place up pretty quick.
Yeah.
So what you're looking at, you want something from the select board saying that we're on board if you get this grant that will allow you to use a piece of property to put this building on.
Yes.
I mean, we.
You're actually looking for a lease? Did I hear that correctly?
Well. You know, a dollar a year.
Dollar a lease, probably.
Yeah.
Transfer it to the library or a long-term lease?
I, I'm not sure how it would go down because we are a 501(c)(3). Um, it is, I know we're already using space in, in the building without a lease, but, um, whether you, like I said, either give, give the land to the library or, or lease it out, um.
I think what we were in the department to do to make it easy would be do, we would have to own the building, but do like a, a dollar lease once a year or something like that. Because I don't, I, like, say, where we take the building down, I'm just trying to come up hypotheticals. If you take the building out, down right here and say, we, we talked about this before, back when we were talking about taking the building down, looking for a project, this, maybe this could be it. Um, but we wouldn't be able to separate that property from this property without being a real big deal. But obviously, we would, before we do it, we'd have to make sure we had town approval, but I'm on board with it. I mean, I, I have no problem with it.
One thing I wanted to mention, I don't, it's, it's in the letter of interest that this space would also, because they encourage us to collaborate with other organizations. And one of my ideas was to share the space with the rec department so that if, if they wanted to, I know there's, um, one thing they've, the rec department's been wanting to do is to offer programs for, that are non-athletic related, to open up.
So this grant allows you to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
So I was just picturing like a really large conference room that could be used for rec department or if we would have like AARP come in and offer classes. Um, we, yeah, we would have to collaborate with other organizations. If you have the time that, I, I mentioned it in the interest form for the connectivity hub, the different organizations we would collaborate with to offer programming.
I just want to clarify, um, in order to submit your letter of, of interest, is that what it is? Letter of interest? You need, uh, a commitment from the town?
Um, no, I think in order to.
I misunderstood. That's what I thought you said.
I mean, to be honest, I already submitted it because I know that the time, they need time to look at it. And I've also, I've already been accepted to, um, the interview process, but that still doesn't mean I'm going to be invited to apply. But so, because it's happening so fast, I wanted them to have time to review my letter of intent and then, um, whatever step came next. So I'm kind of doing this all together. It's all folding over, so.
Yeah, see, I don't think we could sign a letter saying we could do it anyways without a town vote in.
I think we could.
I mean, we could give, uh, you know, that we're on board.
Letter of support.
It's a letter of support. That's what you're looking for anyways, right?
Yeah, it's a letter of support.
What do we actually, what do you need from us at this time?
Right now, it, the, the, the verbiage is, um, a letter of support.
Okay.
Okay. And have you, uh, have you a draft of that letter?
I, I have not, but it's something I could probably do within the, the next week.
Did I hear February 29th?
That's when the letter of intent is due, like, that's when that window closes, but like I said, I've already submitted it and I've, um, just received notice yesterday that they want to interview me.
With, without that?
Without that.
So is the letter of intent for the application, which is due the 29th, is that put down on what needs to be met with this letter of intent?
I think they, I think they'll go together. Definitely. I think also, I, I looked at the application. It's about 18 pages long. Um, and I think I'm going to need a liaison from the select board to proceed, if that's something you guys want to fight over.
I need straws over here.
Rock, paper, scissors? Rock, paper, scissors?
Yeah. I'm sure we'll figure out somebody. I mean, do you need that tonight?
No, no, no. Um, like I said, I, I kind of briefly looked at the application. I, I mean, this is huge and being so small, I, I wasn't, I hasn't been that hopeful. But I'm like, oh my gosh, I got the interview, so maybe I need to continue to look at those 18 pages. But I think in that process, I will definitely need a town official, um, liaison.
So why don't we do this?
To work with.
Have Elise work with Jen, try to put together a letter and we'll, something we can sign next week? Is that going to be all right? Something next week?
Yes.
Just a letter of support.
Letter of support.
Move the grant application process forward.
Yeah. And, and of course, at that point, we'll be out of approach, try to figure out who wants to help be the liaison.
I would love to.
You want to, you want to do it?
You're jumping out of the kid over there.
He says he loves it.
Oh, great. Thank you, Dan.
All right, I didn't stand to you. I ate too long tonight.
I didn't know who else wanted. I didn't want to.
You're probably more helpful with that than I would be. Okay, awesome.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, where are we? Okay, come on up.
I'm also in support for the library here to get this grant. I guess the first thought that comes to my mind is, um, a projected cost for the future. I mean, the grant is going to be so that, you know, they're able to build a building and everything that's necessary. But then you have, I mean, your overhead costs of running it. And I was just wondering if there was some.
That, I think, is a question for the library.
Right, and that's.
It's not for the town.
I have thought about that, but I, like I said, everything's happening so fast, I would, maybe it'll come up in the 18-page application process. That's something.
Well, I would think first, you, you know, obviously, see how big the grant is, how big the library is going to be. Everything's going to go off that, I would think. You're not going to know until, if she gets a half million or a million dollars, that makes a big difference on what the library is going to be. So I, I wouldn't think you could make any sort of judgment until after the process starts.
But, but those aren't questions for the town, as I understand it. Those are questions for the library. They're a separate 501(c)(3). This would be a grant to them, uh, so it's really not any kind of, other than providing the land, there's no obligation on the part of the town, as I understand it. That's what I've heard.
We, we do give some funds to.
No, I understand that, but, um, um, I just want to make sure I understood that correctly, that this is really, uh, for instance, when I went through, I had the same questions, you know, how much is it going to cost? How are you going to pay for it? But those are, I didn't ask them because I, I really don't think they're hard questions. Those are questions for the library to answer.
Okay.
That, that's my view on it. I don't know if that's correct.
Well, my, my view on it is, I mean, as we're going through the budget process, we're looking at 33, a little over 33,000 to the library. And now we're looking at this aspect of it, I was just wondering, you know, what that cost is going to go up to.
Well, that, that 33,000 does not represent the total budget for the library, as I understand it. So, uh, if their costs escalate, they may choose to ask the town for additional funds, but that's a, that's a request that they. Or they may find other sources. So it's, but it's really an obligation on the part of the library, as, as I, as I understand it. Yeah, but they may come and ask for additional funds, but that's a, that's a separate matter unrelated to the grant, as I see it. Does that make sense, Slade?
Yes.
Okay, good. So I would ask those questions of the library.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Thanks, Ray. Um, okay, where are we here?
Back reservation.
We're back to the warrant and recommendations.
Okay. So what I'm hoping for, um, a couple of things I just wanted to point out before we get started, um, because someone asked me about this. I did make the decision to put the ordinances in their entire text inside the document. I know that it makes it a thick document, but, um, and speaking to main municipal about some other items that, uh, we had going on, it's recommended because that warrant becomes part of the town report and it becomes a permanent document for years and years down the road. The way that some other towns do it, you know, they have a true attested copy on, on file with a clerk's office. You've got one file with, one document with a seal on it, they hope the clerk over twenty, thirty, fifty years doesn't lose or misplace. It's a little more paper, but in twenty years, you'll be able to go find that town report and find it just as printed, so we're going to continue with, uh, what we've normally done. Um, assuming the board wants to skip over the floodplain and the, um, mooring until after the public hearing, um, we're going to jump right to page twenty-two. Twenty-two is the ordinance that was the correction, according to code enforcement, to change the, uh, amount of earth moving activity in that chart. So I'm hoping that we can motion and get through some of these tonight on your recommendation, that public hearing's already come and gone.
What was that change again, Jennifer?
Uh, they, this, um, changing it from ten thousand to greater than or equal to one thousand was already approved by the voters in, in texts, they just didn't change the chart last year, so this is really more-
Housekeeping.
Right.
So the new threshold is ten thousand, that's being proposed here?
No, it's greater than or equal to a thousand. But this, this has already been passed, Tom.
Other voters last.
In the text last year. They just didn't change the chart that matched it.
Hmm. I have a different understanding of it, I'm sorry, I must have, uh-
Yeah.
I thought that, uh, I understood there was a change and it was reflected in one area and not in another, which created some confusion, but I thought the change, um, oh, it did lower it, that's what you're saying, it did lower it?
From ten thousand to one thousand?
Yes, thank you, all right, got it.
Yeah, see, I, I just spoke to the code officer and I was, I was, I kind of had a little beef with this because the way it's written, and maybe I didn't catch this last year, but, um, it was fill-in and grading, okay? More than a thousand yards, so, he says, oh, well, that's only if you're hauling or out, but that's not what this says. This says grading or fill-in. So if I have, if I have a thousand yards of gravel in my backyard and I got a hole over here and I want to move ten thousand yards from here to there, it's just saying I have to go to-
Additional use?
Conditional use.
Is that what-
On, on your, on the same property?
Yeah. That, but because, and when I said that to him, he's like, well, I guess you can read it like that, well-
That's what it reads like.
That's what it reads like. So unfortunately, um-
Has council reviewed this?
Yes.
And-
Council deemed it to be illegal, legal.
Yeah.
He hasn't given opinion on it.
But have they, have they given us their opinion as to what it's really saying, whether it's what David's interpretation?
No, we haven't asked him.
Or, or apparently what the planning board's interpretation is?
No.
They sound different, is that right?
I can bring the code officer in next week, we can table it until next week if you'd like.
Because right here, proposal amendments, the zone ordinance related to fill-in, grading, or other earth movement activity. That doesn't say removing or, or fill, um, or hauling in.
Well, it's, okay, yeah.
You know, so, you know, if you look at that part of it, I don't know, I, I'm not able to say.
Why don't we put the question to-
All right.
Either the planning board or council, I don't, I don't know who best to have.
All right, so we'll skip over that one. So, um, Article nine is the water quality, so they did make changes to this, it now reads, "No person shall bury any animal remains or permit the burial within a hundred feet of a source of potable water or within a hundred feet of a natural water body within the shoreland and resource protection districts."
I, I personally have some reservations about this one, um, Acton being a farming community and there's no specifying this as any animal, so like hamster, like go, tiny animals, things like that, as someone who grew up on a farm and whose family has a lot of pets, it's putting a burden on many people who might not want to cremate their animals and might be more costly for them to bury them. I do think there is a concern that was brought up, but also, it's the first situation that we've seen with something like this in a while, I think it, we'd like to see some more well thought, so.
This is a-
I do hesitate with this one.
This is a knee-jerk reaction to one incident, and I don't think we could ever even, how, how are we going to force something like that? You know? I mean, the next neighbor snitches on you for burying a cat?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, and then, oh, next thing you know, they're at the code officer, oh, we're in resource protection, because that's my big beef is the resource protection. I mean, nobody even knows where their resource protection is if they're burying their cat. You're going to go up to, you're going to go up to the town hall and go, oh, I gotta bury my cat, so let's go see the code officer. I mean, this is ridiculous. So, um, no, obviously I'm not for it.
Is anybody going to approve it as written, or you want to do on, not to pass?
On, not to pass.
And Tom?
Maybe we need a motion.
Yeah, we got to make a motion.
Let's get a motion.
I make a motion, it's on, not to pass.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
All right. So we have skipped twenty-two articles for the school, that's what they told me. Article thirty-two, see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to appropriate and expend monies from the unassigned fund balance for the purchase or equipment to use as they deem advisable to meet unanticipated expenditures and emergencies during the twenty-four, twenty-five year. Expenditures in excess of five thousand shall require the advice and recommendation of the Warren Finance.
And this is the one where we get increased amounts?
Yes, from five hundred to five thousand.
Otherwise, the wording is the same?
It's identical.
Make a motion?
Make a motion, will you approve Article thir- uh, thirty-two?
As written.
As written.
Second.
All in favor?
All right, Article thirty-three, we had a discussion on last week, um, I did speak to Mark Roy about this and, and he, um, concurs that this article is to dispose of, of anything, any property we have over five hundred dollars. He still recommended that it was over, you know, that you went a lot higher than that, but, um, this gives you the right, whether it's by sealed bid or what, by putting it in the dumpster, to dispose of anything you see fit, uh, less than five hundred dollars.
This is something we've been carrying along for quite a few years now.
It's required for a desk or a typewriter or-
Yep. Okay, do we hear a motion?
Motion to, uh, to, to approve, uh, Article thirty-three as written.
Second, all in favor?
Article thirty-four, I'm not going to read out loud because you've all seen it in my email a couple of times and now you've seen, um, main municipal's recommendation. This is the foreclosure article as cleared by legal in regards to, um, the statute and where the funds have to go in the process, town follows.
This is all the new, the new way of doing it?
It's a little different than last year, but it's the same statute, yeah. They had us remove a section out of it altogether about waiving foreclosures, so we did that.
Okay. Do we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, recommend adoption of Article thirty-four.
Second, all in favor?
Article thirty-four sets the tax rate dates as October fifteenth and April fifteenth and interest at eight and a half percent and abated taxes at eight and a half percent.
This is increased from four, right?
Yes.
And when this is the state recommend, that's what the state recommends?
That's the rate, correct.
Yep. Just some point of interest, I saw the IRS just adopted eight percent for late taxes. They have to, from three percent to eight percent right here.
I move to adopt Article thirty-five as written.
Second, all in favor?
Okay. So Articles thirty-six, uh, yeah, thirty-six and thirty-eight, we're going to jump a little bit and I, um, just look at them together. So Article thirty-six is a housekeeping article that allows us to authorize the select board to execute and, uh, complete any documents related to grants or donations. It does very clearly, um, in here say, to see if the town will vote to accept any revenues received from MEMA, FEMA claims during the upcoming year and place it in the emergency disaster reserve fund. Um, that's the point that Warren and Finance made, if you look at thirty-eight, we asked permission to disperse that account and dissolve it, so we obviously can't do both. So the recommendation will be to change Article thirty-eight just to disperse the FEMA funds into the unassigned fund balance, because you've already done whatever work you got reimbursed for and just to cross off the last part of that sentence and dissolve the reserve account, because it needs to stay.
So what, so you want to do what now?
Interesting, can I ask you a few questions?
Okay.
The, um, in order to get, um, monies from these agencies, you have to demonstrate that you have done work?
They, well, first they're going to deem it an emergency, they're going to deem it a disaster.
Yeah.
You turn in all the slips and prove what you've done.
So, so at the point that you got the payment, you've already documented to the agency that you have expended the money.
Right.
So the revenue is to offset the expenditures that have been incurred. I'm trying to understand why the money just wouldn't go in as a general fund revenue, as opposed to a reserve account, which would suggest the money's being held for future use, when it's reimbursing us for something that's already been incurred.
Yeah, because at the end of the day, say we have a, a natural disaster where, uh, we got to spend a zillion dollars on fixing roads or whatever, okay? Obviously, if Will Langley's only got so much money in his account, he's all fixing roads, you know, we're going to have, we're going to pull together and we're going to do a special town meeting anyways, pull money out of the undesigned fund.
Yeah.
That money should go back in the replenishment.
Well, yeah, but it's just a general, I, do, do, do these grants require that we put it in a reserve?
Yeah, I don't know, I can't answer that.
Because it doesn't make any sense.
But they're not grants. If you get FEMA, FEMA funds-
Well, let's say any grant or donation.
I, I think they're actually, they may actually be grants, I don't know what the term is, but, uh, the point is they're reimbursing us, so it's not as though they're giving us money in anticipation of future expenditures that we're going to make. If that was the case, I'd understand why it would go into a reserve account, but if they're reimbursing us, then it's just a revenue for the current period and it gets booked as revenue.
The only other thing I could see is that, it's kind of like, like you said, having a reserve account specifically for the fund, for disasters, so that we don't have to pull from any other department or any other funds that we have, that might be, that's the only thing I could-
Yeah, yeah, I, I can understand, but that's a different, that's a different matter.
Because I agree with you, I think it sounds just like a reimbursement.
Did Leslie have something you were dead?
Oh, so sorry, didn't see that.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, um, clarify what, um, Warren Finance, our thoughts were on this.
Yep.
Um, we initially were, um, thought that, you know, we should, that, uh, an account like this should be, um, eliminated, however, on thinking of it, the check comes in, um, treasurer can deposit it immediately into this account and then it would be funneled to the, uh, department that did the work, so it's reimbursing their budgets.
And that might have been the original-
So this is, this is basically just, so the money doesn't get lost.
Sometimes it comes in so long after.
But, yeah, you know, at the end of each year, this account should be zeroed out.
Absolutely.
There should never be a balance in it carried forward.
Right, but it, it's just like a holding account for when the, the check first comes in, until you're able to, um, put the money into the proper, um, budget.
So removing that sentence on thirty-eight to dissolve it, dissolve the reserve fund, dissolve the reserve account, like I first mentioned, should solve it, because you're still going to have the account, the money gets dumped in there and at the end of every year, you're emptying it out.
For the purposes of, of, um, the way a grant would typically be accounted for, is you would open up an account for that emergency and that you would record the expenditures in that emergency account, and then when you got the revenue, it would be credited to that account and it would zero out. That way you don't have to worry about moving money around. In other words, you've got an emergency, you got to incur expenses, and we know we're going to get reimbursed and-
But the, the problem is, is like I say, because I've dealt with this quite a bit with FEMA, okay? So what we do is, you know, we have a natural disaster and what we do is we document, we go and show them all the damage, we come up with estimated cost, you know, when the governor declares an emergency, bang, you know, this, you know, they'll send money. The problem is they usually don't send the money for quite a while.
Like two years.
So, yeah, so the money might not be in for a year, okay? So the problem is, you'll get the money, all the expenditures are already done, a lot of the time, the budget's already been made up for the next year, so-
So why not just put it in the unassigned fund?
It might as well be s- s- right back in the undesigned fund, because it's going to get lost anyways.
I, I haven't looked at one of these, but typically the government will want an audit trail that said that if, if you submit paperwork that says your cost of this, they're going to want to see an accounting of that. They're going to, if they come back two years from now and they want to see, well, show me the receipts for that, then we, we should have an account with all those expenditures and, you know, that you could dig into the detail if you wanted to, and that's, if, if you don't get the money in the year that you incurred the expenses, you just book a receivable. And, you know, you say, I, I got a grant that's going to be coming in the future and you book the revenue now, and when it comes in, it just gets, the-
What do you, what do you recommend? And keep in mind, there's, we done, there's two articles combined here, I think, effective two years ago. The grant piece is separate, then another grant money is going into this account.
The first one simply says that we would, it authorizes the town to make application for, uh, grant funds, correct?
And to receive any MEMA, FEMA money.
And to receive any money. That, that one to me seems fine, personally. The second one-
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, um-
We need to, I thought the bo- the board wanted to expend the money out of this account, at least put it back in the unassigned, or do you want to leave it in there?
Well, how long's that money been in there? That, it's been quite a while.
This is, this is just an accounting entry, I don't think it needs any approval. If, what should have, what should have happened was, the expenditures should have been identified and they should have been matched against the grant at the time they were received. So it doesn't re, I don't think it requires a town vote to do that, it's simply saying, the accountant's got to make sure that we incurred expenses equivalent to the grant amount and, and to document that. So that doesn't require, in my mind-
So it's a, it was set up as a reserve fund, so the only approval that we have is to carry forward but not appropriate. So the only reason the article was put there is because the original intention of the board was that they wanted to appropriate it on something.
Well, we should take a look at this for next year, because I don't think this, this procedure is-
All right, and I'll double check with Mark, but, okay.
Yeah.
So is it still the, yeah, okay, well, let's just table this one all together for-
Well, no, it would be different if that- If we had authority to spend that, that money would be different, but the only problem is we don't.
Well, based on where it appeared on Article thirty-seven, that's, that's the advice we're getting, is that we don't, because it, it's the last X amount of years, it's appeared in thirty-seven as a-
That's right.
So, so the problem is, is the money's carrying over, carrying over, even if we have a natural disaster or whatever, we can't put them, we can't even use it.
It's to authorize the town to carry forward but not.
Are you saying we're not authorized to use it?
That's right, to carry forward but not appropriate.
Yeah, it's just.
Is where it appeared for the last X amount of years. See, it used to be up here, Tom.
That's why I just figure, you know what, instead of just having money sitting in an account for nothing.
It says, said boards ought to be appropriated at the, no, thirty six seems to give us the authority to do it. At the end, it says, said funds are to be appropriated at the discretion of the select board to restore budgets of the various city departments for expenses incurred during a declared event. So, the town, the select board, has the authorization to incur those expenditures.
Okay.
Am I reading that wrong?
I don't know why we've had the reserve account all those years. I'd have to check with the treasurer or something.
I mean, if that was the case, if, so what we should have been doing, instead of that reserve account, should have been putting that right back into the, the road commissioner's budget line.
What, what I'm saying is, I would not get any of these expenditures or revenue in the road commissioner's accounts. If we had expenses associated with a disaster, they should be put in an account labeled whatever, disaster of two thousand twenty four. We accumulate the expenditures there. It doesn't get confused with the road, the road commissioner's normal budget. Those are, because you don't want this stuff flowing through there. You'll never figure it out. You have all the expenditures in this account, which is a expense account for this emergency. We apply for a grant, we take the revenue, drop it into that account, it's all done. And all the audit trails are there and it should satisfy the terms of the grant. And I think we have the authorization given thirty six to incur those expenditures.
I don't disagree with that. I, I, my concern.
You don't?
I don't disagree with that part of it. My concern is, is that we haven't, I'd have to go back and see how long it's been since any money's put in there. When was our last one? And the fact that it has been rolled over year after year as this reserve account. I thought you were looking for authority to empty it.
Well, and, and that may be because we actually had a warrant that rolled it over.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to find.
Was that in prior year warrants?
Yes, so.
Okay, so we.
That's been doing that since I was a road commissioner.
So, we want to, it seems to me we need authorization to, to remove the money out of that account, put it in the designated, but we'd never do that again. We don't.
And that's why.
Funds forward.
Right, that's why we're, it's, that's why it's no longer on thirty seven's list. We were trying to get rid of it.
Sense to the warrant and finance committee, what I'm saying?
Come on up.
Can I say one?
I see your point, Tom, as far as having an account, okay? But at the end of the year, that, that account actually should be at zero, right? Because if everything has been paid for from the undesigned fund and the money comes in from FEMA and it gets put back into the undesigned fund, then that account should be at zero. I understand your, your aspect of all the receipts that are submitted. Of course, you're going to submit either the originals and have copies, but you're right, a file should be made that accounts for all the expenditures. At the end of the day, though, you're looking at, and I'm with Jennifer, just to remove the dissolve the reserve account. That account doesn't need to be dissolved. It needs to remain at a zero balance.
If, if you get a grant and you incur expenditures, that should never flow through undesigned funds. That is a separate restricted account. The grant monies are restricted to that purpose. The expenditures are to support that grant. That should be in a separate non-reserve account. You can call it whatever you want, but it's a grant account. And the school does this all the time with their grants. They have grant funds that are outside of the normal operating budget. They take it in as revenue. They record the expenditures against a grant account. The two match up and they zero out. That's, that's typically how grant accounting works. You don't flow it into the town's unrestricted money because it isn't. It's not unrestricted.
And he's absolutely right, and that's exactly how we did the GOH fund, just the way you explained it. So, that sentence only pertains to MEMA and FEMA. But what I would point out, if I look at last year's warrant, which we should have done in the beginning, or checked with our treasurer, is that Article fourteen says, to see if the town will, this was last year, to see if the town will vote to carry forward the following fund balances and allow the balances carried forward to be appropriated to the department below. So, FEMA falls under the first list, saying that it's, you already have approval for it to be carried forward and appropriated.
Okay.
So, it's not on the second half that says to carry forward but not appropriate. So, my question to legal tomorrow, and I'm going to hope we can just table this until next week, is this article may give you the right already to appropriate it elsewhere.
Article thirty six?
Article fourteen of last year in the current year.
Does that look like Article thirty six?
Similar.
That's the way I read thirty six, inappropriate. It gives the select board authorization.
Yeah. On a declared event.
On a declared event. Well, that's the only one you're going to get money for, right?
Let me get an opinion on it. So, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So, the idea is that we zero out this account.
Yeah.
But it does stay a reserve account for FEMA and MEMA only.
But if, but if, no, wait a minute.
The account altogether?
Because of the way it's written here and he pointed it, so if, if we keep that account, this gives us the authority to spend out of the account if we do have a declared event, correct? So, then just keep the account.
Could, could I ask you to check with counsel?
Okay.
And then check with Mark Roy. This is pretty typical grant accounting. And my guess is he'll tell you, open a, open a disaster expense account and let the expenses flow there and the revenues flow there and keep it off the books of the town.
I will double check.
Remember when we made that account?
He and I went through every one of these warrants together.
Yeah, during Hurricane Irene, remember that?
Okay.
We did that because although the money was coming in, the road commissioner weren't getting it. The only problem, we couldn't spend it.
So, you guys are, the warrant finance meeting next Friday, so we have time. I'll get an answer.
I can't speak for Warren Finance. I can only speak for, as a member. Mine is keep the grants out of it. Keep the grants out of the emergency fund.
They are out of it if you read the article. It's a whole.
I've read it thirty times, but we keep putting them together. And the very last sentence gives you, you know, the appropriation shall not exceed the expenditure. You got permission right there. Pretty simple, you know? Otherwise, it would not say.
Well, we'll figure it out.
Thank you. Okay, where, so where are we now?
So, we're going to go back to thirty seven.
Thirty seven.
Actually, no, we're going to skip thirty six, thirty seven, and thirty eight.
Okay, thirty nine.
Thirty nine is to see if the town will vote to appropriate fiscal year twenty four, twenty five anticipated revenues. I don't know if it's relevant, David, but I was, I noticed the abstention on the warrant of finance. And we've had, do I have that right that there was an abstention? Five zero one is what my records say.
Yeah. Who was, who was the? That, that, no, it was, it was, it was, honestly, I simply did not understand what was being read.
Okay, all right, so there are no, all right.
Yeah, usually we have to disclose reasons for abstention if it's a legal reason.
I just, when it was read, I don't know, I.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion that we recommend adoption of Article thirty nine as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Article forty is general government. We've all seen the spreadsheet, added, subtracted, everything adds up. This is the one that Warren Finance has agreed to take another look at. I have already sent the treasurer an email for that breakdown, so.
Make a motion that we adopt, I'm sorry, we'll see a discussion.
We're, we're going to vote on this?
Yeah, nothing's going to change. If anything, we're going to clean up the line.
We hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, we adopt Article forty or recommend adoption of Article forty as written.
Second.
All in favor?
All right, forty one is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate one million eighty seven zero thirty nine for the public safety.
I move that we recommend the adoption of Article forty one as written.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Forty two are the road commissioner rates. The only change from last year, remember, is the increase on the road commissioner based on the three point two five. The board moved forward.
We hear a motion?
I move that we adopt Article forty two, recommend the adoption of Article forty two as written.
Seconded. All in favor?
Forty three is the public works building, and then just in case you didn't see the email, I did talk to Will and he dropped the building from eleven thousand to seven thousand. So, four thirty five, two thirty five for public works.
I move that we recommend the adoption of Article forty three as written.
Seconded. All in favor?
Article forty four is the raise and appropriate seventy five thousand, seven sixty two and appropriate twenty five thousand from LRAP for District One Road Maintenance. Uh, summer, I'm sorry.
Make a motion that we recommend adoption of Article forty four as written.
Seconded. All in favor?
District Two raises and appropriates an Article forty five, ninety two thousand, nine seventeen and twenty five thousand from LRAP for District Two Summer Maintenance and the five thousand dollars for flat ground road.
I move to recommend the adoption of Article forty five as written.
Seconded. All in favor?
Article forty six is your combined winter and, uh, winter maintenance for District One and Two in Sand and Salt. There was a small change there. I think it was a hundred and eighty seven dollars. For some reason, they were off from the year before when we carried them forward, but that is your total, three forty nine, seven forty seven.
I move that we recommend the adoption of Article forty six as written.
Seconded. All in favor?
Article forty seven is the H Road Reserve Account, three hundred and forty thousand from two nine seven eight H Road to forty one oh four H Road. And it does say that the project should be done by six thirty of twenty twenty six. Any remaining funds shall be returned to the unassigned fund balance and said reserve account shall be dissolved.
Make a motion, we adopt as written Article forty seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Article forty eight is for the County Road Reserve, four hundred and thirty thirty, four hundred and thirty three thousand dollars to reclaim and pave six hundred and ten, six thousand one hundred feet from, there was a typo there, no capital F, from two forty six County Road to Fox's Ridge Road. Same stipulations, using it by June thirtieth of twenty twenty six and dissolving the account thereafter.
I move that we recommend the adoption of Article forty eight as written.
Seconded. All in favor?
Article forty nine is eighty two thousand, nine hundred and ninety seven dollars for Culture and Recreation. And this is your rec department, the Act in Public Access and Forestry. Is that right, Tom?
I'm sorry?
And forestry is in that line?
Yeah, I believe it is. I can check.
Or a cemetery, yeah.
Want me to check?
No, yeah.
Yeah, you know, yeah.
I'm, I'm not really on it.
Let me look, let me look.
I think it's Forest and Conservation. And cemeteries, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Forty nine, that's the discussion. Culture and Recreation.
Should we clarify the wording with that or?
That's Mark Roy's accounts that we brought over to match the.
It would be consolidated in the single eighty two, but whether we would want to give further detail in the description.
Culture through us.
Hmm?
Culture through us. The word culture.
Yeah, just through me.
And so, what do we say that is? Why don't we just call it what it is?
So. Last week, you voted to consolidate these to match, Mark?
I know.
Is that something we could do next year that we could change?
Let me, let me look.
We have more time.
Ten thousand five nine nine.
Do you want to just skip by this one? We're going to go to the other one next week anyways, right?
Okay.
We can, we'll discuss this, so we can keep moving.
Well, if you want to make a change, though, I need to know because we're going to finalize next week.
Okay, I guess so, yeah.
All right.
You guys go ahead. I'll, I'll look while we're doing it, okay?
Okay, the next article is ninety four thousand, eight eighty for Health and Welfare and Other Community Services. The ninety two thousand, everything from library to social services. I saw the email from Warren and Finance. They liked the way they were all spelled out. But again, based on your decision last week, they were consolidated to follow the chart of accounts.
I do have a question on this matter. I believe I'm going to have to excuse myself. Am I right? Because I work for one of these organizations.
Have to do the same thing.
So, I just wanted to verify.
I got abstaining also.
All right, I got to pay attention. What are we talking about?
This is your social services.
Community action. I did get a contract through, for plus.
And I work for KAMM, which is.
Community services?
Community services and the health and welfare.
So, you two are both abstaining?
Yes.
Let me, I don't.
So, we took out all of the water ones?
Yeah. Wasn't there a request to have the detail on this? From the warrant and finance committee? No?
There was a request in their email.
I just want to make sure we discussed that.
Yeah, no, I did. That's what I just said, yeah.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, they, they wanted to see them listed out like you normally have.
I didn't necessarily mean list them out on the warrant, but maybe put an insert in detailing it.
Oh, yeah, so the, the PDF of the budget that you have.
So, that way you wouldn't have to change the, the warrant if you.
So, the PDF that you guys get, the budget that has the last year and this year, that'll be part of the packets that we hand out at town meeting.
So, just, just so people know what they're voting for was what, what was I thought?
It's a little different than what you're saying. You, you asked for an insert. I don't know what that means if you don't list it. How would you, how would you create an insert?
You would, you would, a, a separate piece of paper saying, this is, this is a, a detail for Article forty, whatever, fifty.
Why not just list it if we're going to do that?
We want to list it for the simple reason is we got to look, we got, when you, when we do these, you got to think back when people looking back in time, looking back through this.
Once again.
An insert's not there. It's got to be in this warrant. Where did you spend ninety four thousand bucks? That's a lot of money.
Yeah.
It really ought to be listed out.
All right, so we're going to list it. So, as amended?
So, we might as well save it for next week. We'll have to make the change.
Okay.
Will that affect?
You'll need to re-vote on the article next week as well.
What I'll need you to do is send me the list of ones that are, that, you know, that have changed. The, the change on them.
I'll send you an updated warrant.
So, that way on next Thursday, we can vote for them, so you guys are set with our recommendations.
Be better if we just send you the ones that are, that we're going to ask you to reconsider or vote on?
Yeah.
Rather than the whole thing, and then you could just deal with those?
Yeah, that way, as long, as long as I know which ones, I mean, I know I have three right now to be reconsidered, but any, any other one that you're going to need a re-vote on, we plan on voting on them next Thursday at, after the school meeting. So, I'd like to get that all, all done and buttoned up.
Yep, awesome. Thank you. Ray, come on up.
Page nine for Article forty nine.
Yeah, well, no, I'm actually trying to find in the budget. But go ahead.
Page nine.
Page nine in the budget.
Not the budget.
Okay, I'll, thank you.
Okay, we're going to, so, we're going to amend that one. They're going to vote, we're going to vote on that one next week and they're going to vote on that one next week. Is that what we're doing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, where are we, Article fifty one?
Yep, last one. Appropriates the funds received from state snowmobile registration to the local snowmobile clubs.
Vote to, to recommend adoption of Article fifty one as written.
Second.
All in favor?
All right, so we're looking at forty nine, just to decide if we're going to make any changes because we'll need to give Warren and Finance a chance to take another look if you decide to change the wording some.
All right.
So, do, did you find the ten thousand, Tom?
I, if, um, do we have to vote on that tonight or just come up with wording?
You have to at least come up with the wording because that tells the Warren and Finance they need to revisit it.
Okay, I need about five minutes to do this, so I, I can do it after the meeting or if you want to take a break, we could do that, whatever, whatever works. Fine with me.
You want to do that so we don't get too far ahead of you? We don't want to get ahead of you anyways, Ted, Tom. Or we just take a few minutes there, take a break.
Okay, why don't we take a break?
Five, ten minutes?
Well, I'll, I'll let you know when I'm done.
There we go.
It shouldn't be very long, ladies and gentlemen. This is Article forty.
We're going to open the meeting back up.
Jennifer, do you want to review that change?
Yeah, so, um, we, it's Tom's recommendation, I guess, to the, to the board and include the Warren and Finance that he would like me to change the other Culture and Recreation, so this will be one that we'll reword and bring back to and it will add that to your list to be reconsidered next week, so. Article forty nine.
So, we're going to. Three categories listed, right, Jennifer?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to include forestry and cemeteries, just rename it.
Yeah.
So, we'll rename it and send you the articles that we need you to reconsider, please.
Other than that, we've, we're done.
A little more on the budget.
On this, I just wanted to give an update on where we are with the budget. I believe we've, we're still doing some final auditing of these, these numbers, but I think it's in pretty good shape. The municipal budget in total will be four million, five hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and four dollars. Last year's municipal budget was four million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, eight twenty. So, there's a reduction of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars on the municipal side. I just want to point out that that came about because I think every department did a great job in, you know, containing their increases and actually offering up savings. That was part of it. There was also, in the prior year, a significant level of what I'll call capital funding or, or that was in, in the budget. And they were expenditures, putting money into various reserve accounts or expenditures for one purpose or another that are not continuing in this year. So, I think also, it, last year, there was more of the budget funded from undesigned reserves than you're seeing this year. Basically, everything that's in this budget is being funded with either operating revenues, that, you know, of one sort or another, and taxation. That's the way I read this, where last year, there was a fair amount embedded in there that was funded from reserves. So, I think it's a, from my perspective, a cleaner budget in that regard. We have not talked about how we might use reserves to, to offset, to reduce tax obligations and that's something we're going to have to talk about. We will have an opportunity to talk about really through the summer, so there's not going to be any action on that right now. But I, I think the, the town on its part of the budget has done a great job in pulling together this budget. So, you'll get the summary that's coming out, probably in a, you'll get it maybe Friday or Monday.
You got one yesterday. The only thing that's changed is last year's numbers. So, Tom really spent a lot of time across comparing the warrant articles from the previous current year to what was expended. So, there's things moved around, but the current budget didn't change.
No, it was really the prior budget for comparison purposes. And that's where it became clear that there was a real reduction.
So, on the, on the prior summary that we got, it went back to twenty twenty three. So, those, there was nothing adjusted in twenty twenty three. Is that correct?
No, no, no. What you'll be receiving are three columns. One that says twenty three, twenty four approved.
Yeah.
Proposed twenty five and a change, okay?
Yeah, but to clarify, that first column did change. She's asking if it's twenty three, twenty four.
No, 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 it's, I mean, we, we got it, we got initial one. I did say twenty three because we got initial one that was the, the budgeted for.
Twenty two, twenty three?
Twenty two, yes.
Okay.
No, it's not on here. It hasn't been for some time.
Right.
That, that hasn't been on for, what I'm looking at here is what I've been dealing with right along. Now, maybe, maybe. Okay.
Twenty three, twenty four, but we are, that is what we made changes to.
Well, okay.
Right?
Yeah. We, we made changes to twenty three, twenty four, which is the current year budget. It, it, it didn't, in all cases, tie out with what was actually approved at town meeting. So, we made sure that we went back and looked at the actual warrants and plugged in those numbers and that's the basis for what I've just decided.
What I've been looking at is. See, what, what I've been looking at is fiscal year 20, 23 and 2025 tax calculation, where it gave 2023 actual, 2024 budget, which is the year we're living in.
Yeah.
And then 2025 budget, which is the proposed.
I, I believe you've been getting...
So that was this, this one that, that we were sent initially.
I believe for some time, I may be wrong, you've been getting this.
Yeah.
Which is what I'm referring to. It's got, it's showing current year, next year, change. That's what you're going to get, and I believe that's what you've been getting right along.
Though it is, but we also received this one, too.
The, we're no longer maintaining that. We got, it was like too many, too many versions of the budget. They were separate, they were in separate files, you had to reconcile the two. It just got crazy. There was no point in it.
Okay.
All right?
I, I was just looking at the progression, you know, on each year.
Well, you can still do that, because those numbers are fine, if you want to, you certainly can look at them.
Yeah.
We're not going to combine them in here. That's a step that we don't need to do, okay?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Fair enough. So I think we should feel pretty good about the budget we're putting forth. I think in total, if I calculated it was right, it was a 4.7% reduction in the municipal budget.
Well, that might help out in case we have an increase on the other side.
Yeah.
So we'll see what happens. Okay, so we all done with the warrant recommendations, ready for new business? Okay, we've already done the library grant. So resignation.
Well, we received a resignation from the town treasurer. Next Friday, March 1st will be her last day.
Okay.
A resignation letter or anything to read off?
None.
Okay, so you want to make a motion?
To accept, I'll make a motion, we accept the resignation of the town treasurer effective March 1st.
Second. All in favor? Okay, freedom of information.
Hi, this is just FYI that our offices have been working on, freedom of information. This comes from an attorney at Drummond and Woodson, all pertaining to the Curtis pit and blasting. There were, I think, a total of 19, 24 attachments that were sent over. There was a small charge based on the state law, which we cleared with our attorney, as far as time spent gathering said documents. So we got that off, got the invoice sent. And then about a half hour later, we received another freedom of information from Mr. Curtis's attorney, looking for a copy of everything we sent to the first attorney. So we handled that one as well.
Kind of figured it was going to come to that.
And that's where we're at, but they've been completed and paid for.
That's good. And one thing we do, I want to add to that, is our court officer contacted the attorney. He wrote up a thing saying, you know, what he's doing is, you know, fine, dah 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 dah. So it kind of got us out of the picture. That's why it's become illegal between them guys, so.
That was in response to a citizen who had engaged in a counsel, and they wrote to us, right? And, you know, made certain assertions, and our counsel did a really nice job of, and, and, and our court officer did a really nice job of explaining our position, and I think they've sort of now understand it, and they're ready to move on.
You know what, what was funny, it was the night before, I was talking to Jennifer, and I says, I want lawyer to write up, look and do it, write up the thing I want it writing.
Yeah.
Didn't even need to do it, Jason, I literally called that night already, and I was already having it done. So it worked all well, just to kind of get us out of the mix, because we were getting email after email.
Yeah.
Okay, public comment. Okay.
Can I ask a few questions, or just maybe for future meetings? Sometime, we need to get to this drawing for the transfer station. And so I, these are just some things I've got hanging around, I want to make sure we get to that.
Yeah, and you know what, at the same time, you just reminded me, can you contact our engineer and see what the schedule is on the survey and update of the rec field?
Oh, yeah, good, good, thanks. We, we also have the road assessment. And, and we talked about having a, inviting the road committee and Cabeza into command, so they could present this. Is that being scheduled?
So the, the document was sent to the full road committee, and the instruction on the transfer station in that one, if we were going to get through the public hearing after March 6th, and we'll schedule for...
Yeah, let's just get rid of this budget stuff right now, then we can really hit that stuff on.
Just, just one other thing I had setting aside.